Evening. Okay, open the meeting to the public. The public may address the board on any topic at this time. You'll have another chance later in the meeting. Yes, sir.
Ron Wong, CRN News. I'd like to inquire if the board is going to take any action to confront the county on the couple of reassessments done for many of the homeowners in the village. There's no primary reason to how this happened, but I think by any stretch of imagination, there's probably very few properties that actually increased the value, but assessments have gone through groups of many homeowners, increased for probably everybody. I'd like to know, Mr. Mayor, do you intend to take any action against the county in this?
That's not the role of the village. The petitioning procedure they have is for the homeowners to petition their assessment or brief their assessment. It used to be the grievance assessment board. The village board was that, and that changed in like 1992 or '93, and they passed it off to the county. So we wouldn't be able to, you know, speak on behalf of an individual property owner.
I'm not talking about individual property owner. As a village, we are a legal municipality that can take the county to court. We have legal resources, and it's a huge impact on part of the majority of the village. And I think it's certainly reasonable to expect that the village would fight for the homeowners, and the village are of support. I just want to know where you stand on that. Do you ask to fight for the village or just let it go?
We can ask the attorney, the village attorney, if we can do that legally. I don't believe that we can. I believe that the law is very clear, and it's up to the individual assessed person to contest their assessments. I don't line one up significantly. I just got my letter in the mail this week, so...
Does your answer to that, you will ask Attorney Murnane for opinion?
Either him or the Alden, Paul Alden asked down.
And what do we expect the answer on that?
You're not going to get an answer. I mean, that's what I'm going to do. You ask me what I'm going to do, I'll do that much. If they have anything positive to say, I'll report it. If they don't...
Can you give us an assessment when you could report back on that?
Well, when I hear back from them.
So if I come back in two weeks on that sort of update?
Maybe, but don't hold your breath because it's not high on my list.
Don't hold your breath. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can go ahead.
All right. This is the previous meeting of April 22nd. I make a motion to accept this, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion on the second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the votes are approved. Bills. Our son, are there any additions or deletions?
No, there isn't.
Make a motion when you pay the bills, Mr. Mayor? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, is there any correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to report to the mayor and trustees. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss the employment history of particular employees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The update on the RFP water plant study. To date, we have received two proposals. We're waiting for one or two others that we've reached out to. We'd like to have a better selection before we make a selection or we'd like to have a better selection of applicants before we finalize...
Finalize?
Before we finalize the agreement. Well, we've got to sit there to evaluate them all, and there's this point scheduled, and we'll all sit down and do that, and then we'll award it. But we only have two so far, and we're asking, well, we're asking a couple other ones.
Do you need to extend the bid data?
Yes. Yeah, I'm just keeping, actually, I'm keeping it open. They need authorization to sign contracts with Elevated 518, and that is for... No, and it's not, it's not that. It's a, I got a couple resolutions mixed in here. Okay, we have, one is for the PLM study, the PLM electric study, and that is to hire Elevated 518 to coordinate the effort on behalf of the village. The cost is $75 an hour. And that's the first contract. Now, these contracts, one was submitted to me, and I sent it to Attorney Murnane to have him look it over, and it was too long, and I don't want it, I don't want a 16-page contract or something like this. So I asked him to have one of his staff write it in such a way that protects both us and Mr. Peters, and then that'll be kind of a format for other ones. So when that one comes back, that's the one that I'd like, the one that Murnane has signed off on to have 518, Elevated 518, do the PLM study. So I'll make that as a motion. I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's the PLM study. The other one is the Parks and Grants one. Again, that one is coming up. We had a meeting which I'm going to discuss in a minute here about that. He's going to be kind of the clerk of the works, but he's more than that. A clerk of the works is defined as, or the term is used to describe someone who shows up at the field or the construction site on a regular basis and makes sure that the contractor's doing the work according to whatever the specs were, and he will be doing that. But he's also going to be drawing up the actual work things and the bid specs so that we can award bids for different things, like for instance, we're going to be buying probably in the neighborhood of $60,000 worth of playground equipment. So he'll draw up the specs for the playground equipment, send out the bids to a couple of vendors, evaluate which is the best one, make a recommendation to us, and then we'll vote to award the bid. But he'll be doing that work for us so that we don't have to get somebody to do that ourselves, you know? That's what he's doing. And it's all the components of this grant. There's the soccer field leveling, the...
Pickleball fence.
Pickleball fence, the playground, something with the parking lot back here being paved, extension of the fitness trail, and whatever else we can fit into that amount of money. And so he'll be reporting back to us each step of the way. We'll have to approve, you know, to go out to bids and stuff like that, the way we normally do. But this is going to shorten the time lag on doing that. I estimate probably a month for each one of these things. Again, this will be formalized in a contract that I'm asking permission to sign, but I won't sign it till after it's been signed off on by our village attorney. So I guess I'll make a motion to request that permission to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, this is with 518 for the recreation. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, and the mayor votes aye. It's four to one. Do you care to discuss it, Trusty Dart?
I wanted to. There was a lot of capability of people in the village to be able to do this, contractors and whatever else, and there were people who have done contracts like this before. Just because it's a grant involved, it doesn't mean it's any different than other contracts. We just needed somebody sharp, and I wanted to keep the business local. That's all Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Didn't go local.
Okay. Okay, now I have resolution. These are part of the Northern Border Regional Commission grant. That was the $500,000 grant that we're pursuing to provide services and connections to the Pfizer property and other things in the village. So I have to, we have to get these two resolutions going. This is Resolution 2019 dash 21. Whereas the Village Rouse's Point is applying for assistance from the Northern Border Regional Commission for the purpose of funding land acquisition, road construction, and design for water treatment facility expansion and multi-use development at Rouse's Point. And whereas the project will create jobs by constructing 1,500 feet of road for multiple use development and will secure land for water treatment facilities, increasing options for new business growth and efficient water treatment process, which will improve the water quality and capacity to attract industrial users, and resolve the governing body of the municipality delegates the signing authority to the following elected official, which is the mayor. Okay, I move that to the floor. This is to authorize me to...
Submove.
Sign the... Okay, a motion on the second? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the second one. Whereas the Village Rouse's Point is applying for assistance from the Northern Border Regional Commission for the purpose of funding land acquisition, road construction, and design for water treatment facility expansion, multiple use development at Rouse's Point. Whereas the application requires the completion of an NEPA exempt addendum. Whereas the further environmental review may be required to fund it through this Northern National Environmental Protection Review Act. Whereas the Village Rouse's Point acknowledges that additional information will be required in order to meet NEPA requirements and has the capacity to follow through with additional environmental review resolved that the governing body, the municipality, delegates the assigning authority for the following elected municipal office, and that's the mayor. I'll need a motion for that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, submotion on the second, authorizing the mayor to sign this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That was Resolution 2019 dash 22. Okay, there's, did you all get a copy of this?
Yes.
This resolution? Because it has this one, the 20...
2021?
2022.
Yep.
I didn't get one. Okay, Trusty Dart, did you get this one?
I did not.
Okay, I'll give you my copy. It has on the back of it, attached to it, is the stuff from Elevated 518 that they're doing, and I'll ask the clerk to give Trusty Arnold one.
I did that for you.
Huh? Okay.
Oh, maybe you and you will bond later this afternoon.
Okay, that's where it is.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. I got them. I got them. I can, well, it's just part on the back of this guy.
That's for...
That's the resolution, Dana?
Just basically... It's very good. It's going to explain part of the ERF.
Oh, well, part of the thing is that they've, no, I don't have them. These are part of them. Grab them. Part of what they've done is they've agreed a letter of intent to convey a bunch of acreage to the Rouse's Point. Part of it's what I asked for was the land adjacent to the water tower for future water plant expansion if we decide to put the water plant up there, which we won't know until we get these RFPs in. And the other thing is, is an extension of Beechwood or Pine View, one of those streets, to go all the way across to connect to Academy Street Extension, which is going to provide, I don't know if they're going to go for both or if they're going to loop the other one onto it somehow.
Yeah, they're going to loop it around and that.
But we haven't negotiated that part yet, but this is going to allow for a significant number of new home building lots in the village. I don't, I don't know how many because it hasn't been surveyed out, but it just looks to me, just looking at it, it's probably about maybe 30, 20 anyway.
Yeah, I mean, depends how, depends how they do it, but yeah, at least, at least...
So it's a, it's a big deal for the village, and that's all tied in with this, with this grant. Okay, now, I'm going to report back to this meeting that we had on Monday, April 29th. Myself and Trusty Menard were arranged to have a meeting with Steve Peters representing Elevated 518 to brief us on the, these different grants that we just did, and where the status of them is and what needs to be done next. I requested that Trusty Arnold also come at the last minute because I realized that I needed some electrical expertise and experience since he used to work for the Village Electric Department, is about as familiar with it as any of us, probably more so than all of us. So anyway, we had about an hour and a half meeting, and it was mainly to discuss the details of this NBRC, Northern Border Regional Commission, grant. That's the $500,000 grant for the expansion of Beechwood and Pine View. And then he gave us a summary of the Parks and Recreation Grant, which is leveling the fields and all that stuff. And then he summarized the importance of the PLM study in having a liaison for this project. And this is to make sure that any new businesses that come into the Pfizer property don't adversely affect, affect the electrical rate payers in the village. So he's going to work with them and make sure that they do it. So his, he's offered to the board his services to manage his study and act as liaison with PLM for a rate of $75 an hour, not to exceed $5,000. This can be revisited if required. We haven't obviously signed that contract yet because it hasn't been presented to us, but, well, anyone have any questions on any of this so far?
Just a, just a comment. When, when we met with Mr. Peters, he also said that he had spoke with some, one of the gentlemen at PLM, and they had a similar, similar case as we have in Frankfurt where they had a building, or they had a company coming in and it was going to take a lot of power, and he said they worked with the New York Municipal Power Authority, and the way he, they set it up is that the company was to be built separately than the resident so that the residents didn't, didn't see any effect of it at all. So I think that's where he was leaning on, and that's what we're kind of looking at doing for, for the Pfizer property also, so that works out. It shouldn't affect anybody's electric rates at all in the village, and I thought that was a very, very positive thing. So that's, that was a good, a good find for him for, for us.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's...
We've got several big, big projects moving forward simultaneously this summer, and it's, I mean, like, he's doing this grant writing and administration, but yet our village administrators spent most of the day gathering information for this. I signed, I don't know, half a dozen documents related to this today in the office. He saw these two resolutions. All this stuff is required. Like, he's making requests and he's doing this, but she's the one that has to dig out the documents that we need and form them up and get the village to be coordinated with this, I guess is the way you put it. So it's taken a lot of, a lot of our office time besides hiring this other person to do this, so, anyway. Let's see, I have some, a couple of nice resolutions here. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village Rouse's Point wishes to express their congratulations to Michael LeBlanc, who will be completing 25 years of volunteer service in the Rouse's Point Fire Department. And whereas Michael joined the Rouse's Point Fire Department on August 2nd, 1993, and began his career in the fire service where he has been a role model to many members of the department. Whereas Michael has been chairperson of numerous company committees and has held numerous department offices such as fire department captain, first assistant chief, second assistant chief, as well as department chief, a position he has held for numerous years and continues to hold today. Under Michael's leadership as chief, he has obtained numerous grants on behalf of the fire department, thus saving the village taxpayers thousands of dollars. And whereas his dedication has been shown in his many acts of unselfish deeds to the department and the residents of the community, therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village Rouse's Point does hereby congratulate Michael LeBlanc for achieving this milestone in his life and publicly thank him for the dedication he has shown to the Rouse's Point Fire Department and the residents of the village. I move that to the floor for a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Roll call, vote. Trusty Arnold?
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty Dart?
Aye.
Trusty Gadway?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. The second resolution, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village Rouse's Point wishes to express their congratulations to Donald Diesel, who will also be celebrating 25 years of volunteer service to the Rouse's Point Fire Department. Whereas Donald began his career in the fire service where he has been a, been a role model to many members of the department. Whereas Donald has been chairperson of numerous company committees and held numerous company offices such as warden, house committee, and executive committee member, a position he currently holds. Donald is to be commended for his extremely active participation in our EMS, serving as an EMT for numerous years. Whereas his dedication has been shown in his many acts of unselfish deeds to the department and the residents of the community, therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Rouse's Point does hereby congratulate Donald Diesel for achieving this milestone in his life and publicly thank him for the dedication he has shown to the Rouse's Point Fire Department and the residents of the village. I'll move that to the floor for a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Trusty Arnold?
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Aye.
Trusty Dart?
Aye.
Trusty Gadway?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. We'll be giving those. Okay. Next thing, I would like to, our son and I have discussed this this afternoon, did some research on this, and we'd like to hire a former village, retired village employee, Kim Bennett, for Public Works Maintenance Worker, $19.50 an hour, not to exceed 23 weeks. And I'd like to begin it as soon as we can this week. Like, it might take a day or two, he might not be ready to start just yet, but I'd like to give the authorization to have him come in and sign them up as quick as we can because I talked to Public Works, I guess foreman, acting foreman, and they're right in the middle of trying to get the village cleaned up, and then what's happening is that milling on the, on the streets is going to come in early this year. It's going to be like June 10th or 12th, or around there. So they're only going to have a week or so to prep those streets before the milling machine comes in, and they're still doing the brush pickup, and well, the village-wide cleanup is this week. So anyway, we checked, and this is all okay. We don't have to pay them any fringe benefits, and we've got a fully trained, experienced person to walk right into the job and start working. So I'd like a motion to hire Kim Bennett.
Submove. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now, I have a, last thing I've got here, I hope, is I have a letter of intent from ERS Investors. They are the company that's developing the Pfizer property. I'll read this out loud. "The following represents a summary of ERS Investors' proposal to the Village Rouse's Point regarding transfer ownership of certain portions of ERS property to the Village Rouse's Point for the purpose of a water treatment plant and to create road access for future development. This letter contains non-binding provisions of understanding between the parties. Unless otherwise explicitly stated, it does not impose any legal obligations on either party. The proposed transaction requires additional documentation and approvals," in other words, to formalize this, "including the preparation and approval of one or more final agreements, setting forth the terms of the proposed transaction in further detail. Before the final agreements are reached, we would like to confirm that we share an understanding of the principal terms and conditions of the proposed transaction, and that all parties are willing to proceed in mutual good faith to work towards final agreements and a closing consistent with these terms. The proposal is as follows. ERS Investors will do each the following. Transfer ownership of all or part of Lot 20-14, which is plus or minus 7.2 acres, to the Village of Rouse's Point for a future water filtration plant. Final size of the lot to be transferred to be discussed and may be contingent on the site, size needed for the future water plant." Now, this is adjacent to the water tower, I believe, to the south side. Obviously, it's a generous offer. We don't want to take any more than we need because we're taking it off the tax roll. So if we can build a water plant in, say, three acres, we take three acres. But we won't know that till we get this RFP in and get some ideas of what we're talking about.
The RFP won't discuss, won't, they'll discuss your options, but they won't...
Right, but they'll give us some general ideas of the different kind of plants, like, like for instance, the board went and looked at the one in Swan, and it's a fairly compact plant, but it also has these, these sediment lagoons behind it that take up another acre or so. Now, we may go with a different kind of filtration system. We don't know yet because we haven't had the proposal, but there might be one that's more compact, there might be one that needs more. So anyway, we've got the plus or minus, we got some room to work here, I think. Number two, they'll provide right-of-way access to Lot 20-14-127 for the purpose of extending Pine View Drive to Academy Street and connecting Beechwood Drive to the new Pine View Extension. The Village Rouse's Point will do each the following. Secure funding through Northern Border Regional Commission Economic Investments Grant Process to fund the creation of Pine View and Beechwood Extensions, including water sewer and electricity access for the purpose of future multi-use development. And two, commission the initial design phase of the new water treatment plant. So that's what we're going to use, well, projecting to use the five, earmark the $500,000 for. Timing all parties, so execute final agreements and proposed transaction by 12:31, 2019, and then there's contingencies and other extensions of time for closing and things like that. Anyways, does everybody, does everyone have a copy of this?
Yeah.
I guess I'll need a motion to sign this. I'll try and, is the mayor to sign this agreement?
Do you make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, the ERS Investors?
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, again, this is non-binding. This is just a general letter of intent. You know, I'm sure we're going to be adjusting things around this, but that's what we've got. Okay, is that sufficient, Donna?
Yes.
I'll sign this tomorrow or whatever. Okay, that's all I have for right now until I remember something that I obviously forgot. Trusty Arnold? I'd like to request an executive session on the history of a particular person, employment history. Okay, have a motion for an executive session, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And the only other thing I have is just to remind people that our yard sale this year is June 22nd, from eight o'clock in the morning until, just a reminder. You want to make a...
It's already out the paper. Make a little announcement about the village-wide cleanup this week, too.
Oh, yeah. And also, we have the village-wide cleanup starts today, V6, and a run-through May 10. And also, there will be no paint, cans, tires, stumps, waste oil, stones, concrete, or wood, and it's going to be by the curb side. Also, brush.
Tree limbs under three inches.
Tree limbs under three inches. All righty, that's it.
Anything else?
No, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Trusty Dart?
Just a couple of small things. With our June 1st budget coming up, we, you and I are going to get together with Dan to put the specs together for his truck. Did you get it out to bid?
Yeah, there aren't really any specs. We already inspected. It's an eight-foot box, regular cab, four-wheel-drive truck.
They're not going with the double cab, like Brian's?
Brian has it for a specific reason. And also, the other, I talked to him about it today while I was at a different thing with him. Remember now, this is... Remember now, this is, this is a, um, a three-year deal. We're going to try and trade this truck in in three years. So if it doesn't work out or we want to fine-tune it, we can do it in three years. Uh, we've got this idea, and we initiated it last year with a truck for the, for the Public Works Supervisor, is we're buying vehicles on state contract that's so low, um, that I think the one that we bought, the extended cab half-ton was, I think thirty-six... It was $38,000 for the, this normal price for it, and we got it for 20, 26. So we feel that if we keep it three years and we have 25,000 or 30,000 miles on it, we'll probably be able to get, or we're hoping, we're doing this experimentally, we're hoping to get most of that money back because it will still be over $20,000 value. And, um, when we do that, we're eliminating all the maintenance on it because it's all bumper-to-bumper warranty. So this is kind of an experimental deal to see if it, you know, if that pans out. Because in the past, we kept them ten years and they were just junked, they're all rusted out and holes in the floor and...
So you think that may...
You may want to consider looking at the extended cab, that because you're going to get probably more of a trading value for your extended cab.
I don't think the deal would be interested in giving you much for a, a regular cab truck. Nobody wants...
It's a $3,500 option, and maybe you'll get, maybe you'll get, uh, $2,000 for it, but you're spending, you're, you don't buy options for things for the next guy. You buy them for what you need, is the rule of thumb.
Right, I understand that.
I mean...
But if we're going...
I, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily true, just because we all happen to like extended cab trucks. There's a lot of people who want work trucks with eight-foot boxes on them that they can haul things in. You get the extended cab, it comes with a six-foot box. The other thing is, we discussed this...
Not all.
Well, you can get the one, but then they're really long. You get an extended cab with an eight-foot box, it's got a long wheelbase on it. But the other thing was, and I talked to him about it today, was I said, you know, he originally wanted an, an F-350-sized truck, a one-ton truck, not tools, but... I said, "Well..." And the purpose of that was to theoretically tow the sewer machine. Well, Public Works Superintendent told me they could tow the sewer machine with the one-ton dump truck, which is set up to tow it, because it's pretty heavy when it's full of water. I don't know how much it weighs, but it's got to be, what, 12, 13, 14,000 pounds?
Probably a little more.
And that truck's set up to tow it. So, he said they can come down and get the truck anytime they want to tow the sewer machine, but they never have done it before. They've always involved the Public Works showing up with the machine and then they work with them. So, the question is, if you buy a specialized truck to do that, you're getting a truck that's going to get 12 miles to the gallon. Now, what do they primarily use that truck for, mileage-wise? Going to Plattsburgh to take their, their five-pound sample down once a week. You know, that's 60 miles a week, probably. And so, you got to ask yourself, what are we really buying a truck for? I mean, I, I don't think it's right to buy a specialized truck for something like that. We should be getting it.
We already have the equipment here.
Right, we already have multiple different vehicles for each different thing. So, anyway. And then the other thing was, I didn't know, I'm going to do a little preliminary checking, but...
Our disc truck going to have...
Do we want to get a 2018, a 2019, or 2020? Because we're almost where we can't order one.
Oh, yeah. It's going to, it's going to be three months before you get one anyhow.
Well, it depends if they find one on the lot someplace, like the one that we bought last year.
Well, if you want 2019...
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
But is it going to have, is it going to have power windows and stuff like that, or what, or...
Well, we've got to, we've got to find out what's on state contract. I haven't even started to do this yet.
I mean, I don't think anybody would, would want a pickup truck with, with crank-down windows. I mean, you know, I mean, you're, you're looking to buy something that nobody wants with crank-down windows and, uh, a straight bucket sheet and a straight, a straight sheet.
Three years.
Yeah.
Well, like I say, we'll see what's available, get some prices.
Yeah, well, you know, if you're going to get prices, you might as well get something that's halfway decent that somebody is going to buy. You know, I mean, to order one with, with crank-up windows and everything like that, you're going to pay just a buck for it?
I don't, I didn't even know if they're available, Ben. I don't know if they make those anymore. You can't buy a truck without air conditioning. There's no reason at all to have a municipal vehicle with air conditioning in it, but you can't buy them without it.
Yeah, I know.
There's no reason...
You can order them, but you're going to pay...
I don't even think you can do that anymore. There's no reason to have four-wheel drive on these trucks. But to get one, you have to special order and wait six months. But down south, that's all they have, is two-wheel drives, Texas and those places, but, you know, that's a four...
That's it.
That's a four, you know? Well, we don't need it here. We're driving on paved roads inside the village, come on.
But...
But you show them one of Plattsburgh, it's back in the village.
One of you ever driven to Plattsburgh in four-wheel drive? I've been here 45 years and I don't think I've ever done it. The roads are bad.
Well, never mind, we won't go there.
Anyway, you never had four-wheel drive until, what, 15 years ago, maybe?
Always had four-wheel drive trucks.
And you didn't have trucks 15, you haven't had, you're fairly new in this truck, Ben.
Always had four-wheel drive trucks.
Anyway. Anything else, Trustee Darke?
Uh, just, you had mentioned a couple of meetings ago, the, the meeting with D E C or Mark McCullough, whoever it is at Pfizer.
Yes, where do we stand on that, Donna? Was it like May 16th or something?
Fifteenth through sixteenth, I'm waiting for a confirmation as far as the time.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting to hear back from him.
Because that's coming up in another week or two. They've been, they've been dancing around on this. One guy that was supposed to do it retired or something, or transferred, and, anyway.
Come on, Seth.
Okay, uh, Trustee Menard?
Just wanted to say, I'm looking around the village, the cleanup's starting, and the village is starting to look really good. You guys did a really good job. Thank you very much.
Okay, that all?
That's all I have, yep.
Okay, Trustee Gadway?
I know, I spoke with Jess Shields, she's the, um, rec center manager.
Yeah.
She's been doing a lot of work around the rec center. She says all major repairs inside the civic center have been complete and sets them up for ready to ice down when the time comes. There's also two benches down at the ball field for the players to sit on while, for the new deck, new deck out is completed. All the maintenance on all the equipment is complete, except for the tires for the new Kubota, which have been ordered. And, uh, pickleball is growing. Had to set up a fourth net, so that's a good thing at $3 a person, so...
I was here the other night, they had, it was full, they had people waiting, there was four in each court, and they had four or five people waiting for their turn to get on those, they were three quarters on. I think there were 17 people showed up that night.
Okay, by Saturday, and so they get...
Yeah, that keeps growing, yeah. But that's, uh, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other reports? Co-enforcement officer there, John?
Well, there's the same thing going there, is they applied for permits for two more buildings this week. And things are actually picking up for the village, as I told you at the last, last meeting. But, uh, I'm going to, uh, I think in the next, uh, next board meeting, I'd like to get in on the executive session with some of the board members because I am going to start issuing some, uh, summonses and a few permits. I'm going to revoke a couple of permits. And I'd like a meeting with the board so the board knows what I'm doing before I do it. I'd like to get the board informed, dressed in what we're doing.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Just give it down and let us know.
Yeah, what?
Okay, just, um, put it on the agenda.
The only thing is, I, I don't want to have anybody, I don't want the board to be surprised by anything. Like, always, that's been going on for years, so certainly won't be a surprise.
Yeah. Okay, did you say permits up at Pfizer, you mean demo permits, or...
Demo, yeah, we got two last week, seven and eight.
Okay.
But I'm more anxious than trying to keep a, we, even Donna today, we were receiving calls, but you know, I have no problem with receiving calls. And sometimes I didn't want to tell you who they are. I prefer they sign, if they got a complaint, sign the complaint, then we can legally work on it. That's pretty tough.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Somebody says something, could be a rumor, could be the truth. I'm not saying it isn't, but when you're writing it down on paper, it makes it easy for me to work with.
Okay.
All right.
Ms. Sullivan, from the library.
Hello. Tomorrow, I start my first training for the 2020 census that state libraries are required to participate in for the online portion that they're going to do for the first time this year. And, uh, there's some requirements for security level for the computers that will be discussed at this meeting. And if, after the meeting, I'll talk with Twin State, see if we meet the security requirement levels. If not, and we have to up it, there are grants available to pay for any additional security needed, and I will apply for one of those if necessary.
Okay. Anything else?
No, aside from that, we're still, uh, we're working on reorganizing the library with all of the basement shelving space we have available now, reorganizing and stuff, cleaning up.
I noticed there's a lot of kids hanging around that library lately.
Yes.
Do locks or anything, or...
No, they're playing Pokemon because they can get the Wi-Fi out in the grass there.
God forbid, they should read a book or something.
They're not going to read a book, they're going to use the Wi-Fi to play the new Pokemon game.
I know there's a lot of little kids up there, too. They had that thing a couple of weeks ago, and then the other day I drove by in the morning, there was a lot of Carter's Park there, so...
Yeah, our, um, storytime, Thursday mornings before we open, there's always a lot of kids.
That's pretty big. I mean, that place is packed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is just what we want, is get our library being used.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, our son, you have anything?
No.
Okay, anyone wish to address the public, or anyone from the public wishing to address the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh...
Recess?
Recess for executive session?
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, executive session. Heading towards it.